Where's our attorney today?
I don't think Jane is scheduled to be here today.
Jane is not here today.
Okay, I'm going to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of May 23, 2023, to order. Roll call, please.
Ryan Egg.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Helen Beck.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Phelps.
Yep.
Here. Okay, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, posting status.
Agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, any questions from anybody? All right.
Do we need to take a technical five for the memory on that?
No, because we'd have to download it. So Gary hesitates, so.
Awesome. Gary to the rescue.
Okay, I will now open the meeting up. Public comment. If you can come up, identify yourself. We're keeping track of time. It's just Janet looks.
Before my camera starts, I just want to say I'm here on behalf of the Cambridge Fire Department, specifically Tom Frederick. He was not able to be here today, so he asked that I read this statement on his behalf. Over the past six months, there have been a variety of complaints made within the community and at various meetings, including meetings with the Cambridge Fire and EMS Commission, designed to portray the fire department as being dysfunctional, corrupt, or broken. This is far from being true. We have been described as having poor morale and a toxic environment within the fire department. Despite coming from a variety of backgrounds, our membership joins together to form a strong team. This is very evident in the meetings we have for training, equipment maintenance, and conducting business, as well as during calls and other activities. We welcome any of you that would like to come and observe our interactions and judge for yourselves. We have procedures for dealing with problems, but they are seldom used due to the fact that we get along very well with one another. Our members receive the appropriate training through classes at Madison College promptly after being admitted to our department. They also receive extensive training at our regular practice meetings. Any accusations disputing this are wrong, and we can easily provide documentation to support our assertion. There have sometimes been judgments made of our performance on incidents. We are only human and far from being above evaluation. The story circulating about a recent fire, however, requires some clarification. On April 4th, shortly before midnight, we responded to a fire on Highway 12. We have heard that it has been stipulated if EMS had responded with our brush truck, they could have put out a small porch fire, which subsequently spread to the whole house because it took the fire department so long to get there. The reality of the situation is detailed in a report from the Dane County Communications Center. The fire had already spread to both floors when the original caller, a passerby, saw it and reported it. The first responding unit to arrive was not EMS, but Cambridge Fire Chief Joe Evans by a full minute. The house was fully involved upon arrival. EMS had a resident with smoke inhalation to attend to, as should be their priority. Cambridge Engine One arrived in a very reasonable timeframe, ready to make an effective fire attack. No reasonable attack is ever made on a structure fire with the equipment carried on a brush truck. It has been said that we can't get along with EMS. This is also not true. We work well with each other on numerous types of incidents. Often, it involves us helping with them with CPR, patient movement, or driving them to the hospital due to their limited staffing. We are happy to provide assistance. They assist us at fires in case we get hurt and with rehab. We work together to remove patients from parks, woods, lakes, and vehicle accidents. The perceived problems between our department derive almost entirely from their director and how he has chosen to handle relations with us. Last year, he requested that EMS medics be allowed to perform firefighting duties. Our response was that they are welcome to join our department, learn our SOGs, equipment, and command structure, and respond on our apparatus as their staffing allows. Firefighter training and state and national standards all dictate that freelancing and operating outside of SOGs and the command structure are dangerous and must be avoided. If he had wanted to find common ground and if he truly understands these very basic firefighting principles, he could have worked toward this. Our fire chief at the time, Terry Johnson, is among the most reasonable individuals I have ever met. He is easy to talk to and always puts what's best for the community first. Instead, communication from the EMS director ceased. No effort to compromise was made, no effort to move forward. Instead, we were told by the Commission President Mark Cook that the two of them speak daily, which has apparently not been directed toward improving our relations. Most recently, Commission President Cook has been making a concerted effort to install this individual over the fire department. He is spending thousands of taxpayer dollars on Attorney Steve Zack to articulate criticisms of the department as justification for this move. The criticisms are far from true. They say that this individual is a police officer, medic, and firefighter, jack-of-all-trades. Well, the fire department does not need a master of none to lead us. We are doing just fine with the competent, well-prepared leadership we have. Please ask us about the critical information you are being presented. We would appreciate the opportunity to set the record straight. Thank you, Tom Frederick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that there are no others in attendance, I'm going to close this portion of our meeting for public comment. Move on to approval of the consent agenda.
A second?
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes. In the meeting minutes, item 11E. Wait till Lisa pulls it out. I read it that Tim made the motion and seconded his own motion. So we probably just need to make that.
Clarify that.
Just get that.
That was pretty good that day.
You were fantastic.
I was totally on top of it.
All right, that was the only thing that I found in that one. The public works, is that part of the consent agenda as well? Or the water and sewer?
Water and sewer.
And the COWC one? Yeah, that was a part of water and sewer. Okay, so I did have a question there. In the public works, they talked about the COWC. That we're at, for the sewer plant, we're at 85% capacity right now. So we're going to need to expand at some point. Can we get a plan so we can see what that is? Because we've got Scott Farms going in. We've got the new QuickTrip going in. And then, I don't know, Out on Highway A, the new construction that they're putting out there, is that tying into the sewer? Or are they going to have all their own? I don't know about that. And then I also don't, isn't there, aren't there some preliminary plans for North Street, that one area of land off of North Street, potentially putting houses in there?
Nothing imminent, but.
Okay. So I just have grave concerns if we're at 85% capacity, and we're just hearing about this now and knowing what we've got coming down the pike?
Yeah, but why would QuickTrip? Here's a question for you. Why would QuickTrip make a difference? Because they were already tapped into the line, right? They're just moving their building.
Right, but someone may take over their existing building, and they're probably putting in larger than what they have today. So, and then, in addition to QuickTrip, there's other buildings that are going to go into that area, and I don't know what those buildings are going to have in them. Oh, and then the new apartment buildings that are going out, that was the third one. The new apartment building that the vineyards are looking to put up. So.
Well, that's Bill Rankin.
Right, but with all of those, I just have concerns thinking there's only a 15% capacity. And that we haven't, like, really planned for.
When is QuickTrip planning to break your own?
It seems like just two years ago, we had 50% capacity.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
And Chris, I don't know if they had more.
This was brought up, same questions were brought up during water and sewer. And Steve Struss is going to give us a report on this about capacity. It was coming to play because of the regionalization with Rockdale, and how is that going to play into, you know, that capacity level? So that's why we really wanted to see what that looks like.
Wow, I didn't even think about that. That's going to put us over a whale.
So Steve is going to come up with something for the next water and sewer and see what we can do. It's, he's not terribly concerned about it right now because with Rockdale's plan, it won't really up the ante too much unless we have a lot of storms. You know, if we have a lot of storms and a lot of, you know, issues like that, then that raises that percentage up.
But technically, if we have a lot of storms, stormwater shouldn't be going down the sewer.
Right, I guess that's the only.
But if it gets over capacity, that's when it, and it's.
Oh, got it. Those, got the holding ponds if we get water added to from storms. Got it.
That was kind of the discussion where the slim possibility of those one-off days where, but otherwise it shouldn't be.
But they've already in the works for another holding.
Out in Rockdale.
Right.
Yeah.
But also here as well, that would be the first step that they would take is getting another holding-capacity facility that's there. But I look forward to Steve's report, and then Ted's going to also assist him with that as well, so.
Okay. And then, another question for water and sewer. Did we ever work with legal to propose to them that we update whatever agreement it was that we were supposed to be testing on a regular basis that we haven't been able to do because we haven't been allowed in their building? Have actually gone through with getting that updated?
I think we spoke about that. It was going to be, we would go on with the existing tests until October, something along those lines.
Are we being allowed in the building now to do that testing?
I don't believe so.
Not that testing, no.
Okay, so.
And that is on the next agenda, the phasing out of.
Right.
Okay. All right, great. All right, thank you.
We did have, if you looked at the agenda, we had a listing of what tests are prescribed by the DNR and what tests that we do above and beyond that. And it's astronomical, and what really was a red flag for me is the price that is incorporated with that.
So now we're going to look at phasing out?
It's the jelly of the month club, you know.
Okay.
It keeps on, you know, we keep on getting hit with that. So now we have to just look at it from a, we have an agreement already in place. We have to make good by that agreement. But there is a sunset on that, and I'm hoping that sunset is October.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, those were the only.
There's been way too much talking tonight.
Question I had so far.
No other questions?
Richard.
Anybody else here on our consent agenda? We've got a motion, a second. Okay, hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, thank you. Moving on, 6A, President's Report. First off, we'd like to welcome Tammy. This is your first meeting here, Tammy? Okay, so we're looking forward to some great things, wonderful contributions, so welcome to the team. All right, the other item that I want to just quickly mention, we've got the Memorial Day festivities, the parade. We've got the pancake breakfast at the fire station. Fire Department will be hosting that again. And then the Lions Club will have their burgers and brats up by Veterans Park. That'll be served after the parade, so it promises to be a full day. I think Todd did a wonderful job with the flags. I'd like to give just a voice for that one. It looks beautiful downtown. I don't know where he got all these new ones, but they are quite impressive.
Didn't the board buy them last year?
Nope. Nope, these were new ones that they just bought off Amazon.
Oh, they did? Oh, nice. Nice, excellent.
Can I make a suggestion that they need to buy flags again to support either the American Legion or the VFW and buy them through there? Please, instead of through Amazon?
I think they were just trying to be fiscally responsible.
Yeah.
You know, I understand they want to be fiscally responsible, but I believe that the flags should be bought through the Legion or the VFW because, you know, it supports them.
I didn't even know they sold flags, so.
They do.
News to us, news to me. It might be news to other people, too. So yeah, now we know.
I know, coupled with the flowers on Main Street and the new flags, as a vet, I'm truly appreciative of what they've done, so. Thanks.
You can just pass that on to Todd.
Will do.
Because I can actually help facilitate that if he needs flags, you know, three-by-fives or the next size up, whatever he needs. Because I was the post commander at the VFW, so I still have my connections at the VFW.
Okay, all right. So those are the three items that I wanted to talk about, but I'll look forward to seeing all of the trustees here on Memorial Day. And hopefully the weather will cooperate, and we'll have, it's a big day, so. Moving on, Board of Review.
We have the Board of Review right before this meeting. We set the date for the Board of Review for July 6th at noon till 2:00.
All righty, and let's see. Todd is not here. Lisa, did you want to?
Yep. So again, Lisa, Tammy Jordan is here with us. She began Friday the 12th. So we've gotten her set up on all our systems. She's begun familiarizing herself with Workhorse, dug into, we've worked with the auditing company where they left off on bank recs. So today started on some bank reconciliations. She did our annual state recycling report, working with the auditors to finish up some of their reconciliations that they were doing, any questions they had. The Form C has been submitted. PSC will be submitted next week. Our licensing renewals have gone out and are due back next week, so we will be setting up a licensing committee so we can finalize those in June. Finally, some other state reports, working on some grant documentation. We have our Ford Grant, the bike grant we're still working on, closing out the generator, our safety grants from last year, a number of other grants. I did attend, two days last week, our LW MMI conference, which is the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance, Mutual Insurance Program, which is our insurers. So they put on a conference for two days each year. So that was last Thursday and Friday. Lot of ongoing projects. Todd is working with MSA on the road projects that were discussed. They're doing some televising of lines and so forth to see what the extent of those road projects would be if it extends into the utilities and so forth. Well Number Three is progressing. Lot of ongoing projects, a lot of stuff moving forward.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay. Lisa, let's move on, Treasurer's Report. Or is that for?
We'll let Tammy take that.
Tammy, you can get that one starting today. All right.
Well, we did the first run of bills in the amount of $23,686.41. The second run in the amount of $14,579.89 for a total of $38,266.30.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $38,266.30.
I'll second.
Chris, you're a little louder so you get the credit here. Thank you. All right, discussion, concerns, issues.
I have two things. One was the MSA, there was a grant application that they applied for. Is that a grant that, do we know when we're going to get that grant? Or is it something we've already gotten?
That's one that the board recently approved for water that they do for the generator for Well Number Two, so they're working on that.
Okay.
We don't have any, yeah, we don't know if we've gotten it or not. I have one of the grant things I'm working on with them, getting some information.
And then the refuel pantry?
Yes.
Or do we have like a tank at the public building?
No, so the refuel pantry is now, we're no longer using the fuel man gas carts. That's the mobile, BP intel.
The BP is the refuel pantry.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, thank you for that clarification.
All gas is purchased through them.
Yep, yep. I did not realize they were called Refuel Pantry.
Yes, yes. When it was sold, that's who bought it.
Got it.
I think, to go back, Paula, on that MSA for the engineering, the grant application, wasn't that for like $80,000, Chris? And there was about a 75% chance that we could get that?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Pay for 90% of the.
Yeah, I was just wondering where the grant application was in the process.
Okay.
Because I didn't know if it'd already been submitted, if we were waiting, yeah, so.
It's still going through the administrative brackets right now, so.
Okay.
But it could be savings of like 90%.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay, other questions? I've got a couple. Speaking of MSA, I see that on page two, we've got $1,200 for contracted services on our comprehensive plan update. What's the timing on that one? Have we all filled that out and?
It's still out there through the end of the month. I'm glad you mentioned that. A plug, anybody listening, as of last week, they were at about 200 responses. The goal is to have 400. They're hoping to close it out at the end of the month and give a presentation at Plan Commission in June. If we want it held out longer, we could. How many more responses will we get if we leave it open another month? If we, yeah.
I'll hand QR codes at the Memorial Day Parade and tell people to.
Yeah.
I made a flyer.
Right, walk around, hey, hey, while you're waiting. Why don't you do this survey?
Oh, that survey monkey thing?
Yeah. On a float.
That's all anonymous, right?
It is, absolutely.
I said Casper.
Everyone knows now.
All right. Any other, any other questions, concerns on our bills? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. It's $38,266.30. Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yep.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, bills are paid. Okay, moving on. New business organizational meeting, committee assignments. Lisa, you, this went out this afternoon to everybody. Did everybody have a chance to look at this and in particular, you know, see what the thoughts were? I'll start with you, Chuck. Were you all right with?
I'm good.
With your?
I'm excited about it.
Okay.
I'm out of finance and in charge of public works.
You fool.
No, it looks good to me, Mark.
Okay, all right. Okay, move on. Paula?
I'm excited for my assignments. I'm fine with them. I only have three, so it should be, and only one, and actually, none of them meet on a regular basis, so that should be easy enough. I do have some concerns on membership of two others. I will be voting no on this organizational agreement unless we have someone else to represent Fire and EMS. I think the village would be better served if we rotated that and got someone else into Fire and EMS to be able to represent there, besides Mark.
Where's that one at?
That is the top of the last page. And then the other question I have is the Blue Jay Way Subcommittee. I would also like to have Mark removed, and I would be willing to serve on that Subcommittee.
Okay. All righty, I'm going to bring it down to you here, Tim.
The appointments I have are fabulous. I cannot say anything bad about it. I would like to say that the Blue Jay Way, you're really involved in a lot of things. I could see you being replaced for that, free up just a little bit more time. Be worthwhile. You got your hands in a lot of things. You're a very busy guy.
And you can attend to any meeting anyway, so.
But insofar as your appointments?
My appointments are great, thanks.
Okay, all right. All right, Chris?
Couple items. One is administrative. So we're looking at the front page here, and Police and Fire, and then we're looking at the back page, Joint Police Committee. Those are the same things, right?
They are. We have stitched in our ordinances the ours and then through the agreement, we have the joint committee.
Right, but Police and Fire never discuss anything fire-related during those meetings.
No, our meeting does not. We could start holding our own individual committee meeting.
Right.
Where Fire could be discussed more.
All right.
Our joint one is just with joint law enforcement.
All right. I have no issue with my assignments. I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and I do, I would have to agree with Paula on the, see, I had always thought, and I must have been mistaken, that when you were on, when you were on the Fire and EMS Commission, that it was the presidents of all of the municipalities. I thought that was written somewhere. But then, the Lake Mills gentleman that serves, what's his name?
Well, that's Dave Schrader.
Dave is not the president of the Lake Mills. And now, what really brought it is the representative for Oakland isn't the president. So I think that that should be a rotating responsibility throughout the board. I had, I was always under the impression that that was automatically the president that served in that capacity. But if you can find it, you know, in your interest there, Mark, to maybe hand out that position to someone else, I think that's in the best interest of the board.
Okay. All right, we'll move down. Bill?
Looks good to me. I guess ignorance is bliss, so.
I'll do a handoff for you for the Economic Development Committee because I was chair of that, so I can just, you know, kind of tell you like where we were. And if you want me to attend the first meeting, I'd be happy to do that, just to sit in the audience.
Is that going to work for personnel, too?
Oh, sure, that would work for personnel as well.
Okay.
You have like 20 pages.
I have one question. I'm happy with my assignments. Thank you for the spots. I'm glad I got to, you know, mix it up a little bit, some different stuff. The COWC, it says two board representatives, let's, it's last page, this Ted Kumbir and Steve Struss.
Right.
Do we need a village board member on that, or?
No, we did, um, we did change our ordinances and I should have changed that on here.
Okay, so it's just.
Saying it could be a representative of, and so we did appoint Ted a couple minutes back.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah, so I have to correct that on here.
So do they, and this, they give regular reports at water and sewer?
Did add that now to the water and sewer, that they would be giving each month, give an update.
I think even on the title of the last agenda, COWC was on, was on the title, Water and Sewer and COWC.
Okay.
Oh.
Do we just scratch the word board representative?
Yeah, yeah.
Which just says representatives.
Yeah.
And I think I would probably be in agreement with Paula and, yeah, Chris.
Will you call me something else?
Oh, no.
I, I just, I was under the agreement, or under the assumption that it was the president that would represent them, but seeing the other representatives, I was a little bit surprised. I do like your finance background, so I think that, that goes in your favor for that, that board, because I think you are the treasurer, yes. And I don't know who we would send, if, if, is there someone else in the group that would be a treasurer?
They, they elect their own officers on the, on the board.
I'm just thinking about what their board will look like, you know, but if we, I like that you're the, the finance person. I think you do well at that, obviously, and do it for a living, so that is my endorsement for you, but I wouldn't mind a fresh set of ears and eyes there, that's all.
Okay. It seems like everybody's okay except for these two positions, and so I'll just, I'll hit these head on. Blue Jay Way. That one is, I don't know what the composition of, of their two members are, are going to be. Chris, you and I have been on this, and that is, that is, that's wrestling with a sack of alligators.
Wrestling?
Yeah. You know, there's, there's issues that are, that are going on, and it's been going on for a very, very long time. I think that the, the chair of the Town of Oakland is going to continue to, to serve on that committee. And I, I don't know where things are going to end up, but Town of Oakland is important to Cambridge, just as Cambridge is important to the Town of Oakland. And I'd like to see something get done here with Blue Jay Way. I talked with Lisa about this, and we need to get a, a meeting with the Town of Oakland on one of our annual meetings, and we're, we, I think it's our turn to go out there, I'm not sure, or whatever, they come here.
I think it's here.
It may be here.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd have to look.
Yeah.
We didn't have them unless here, yeah.
So anyway, the big issue with the Town of Oakland is Blue Jay Way, but that gets us into what's going to happen with Potters and North and all three of those. I think we're going to have to, you know, to have a plan. I had hoped that we would take care of North, or, um, Blue Jay Way, and then we would work on the other two, but I think they're trying to get those at the same time.
That was the agreement that came out of the last joint meeting.
Which they did not honor.
That they didn't renew it on.
Which they did not honor.
That's correct.
And we will have to go back again, and this is all part of the annual meeting. And I'm not, I'm going to just capitulate here, Paula, but I also want to make sure that we are, we are effective in getting something done.
Correct.
Yes.
And nothing's gotten done.
Yes.
Which is why I was thinking maybe somebody else on the committee might be beneficial.
Well, you also have a change in the leadership out there at the Town of Oakland. They have a new town chair, they have a new member on their board. So that's the, one of the reasons why I'd like to continue to work with them, to see that something can get done. Fire and EMS, boy, you know, I'm hearing you and the stepping down, and it's, I'm not adverse to the idea, it's just this particular moment in time.
Nope.
Can I please finish? Thank you.
Just saying no.
Well, Paula, please let me finish.
Finish.
It would be nice not to be interrupted.
Finish.
It would be nice not to be interrupted. Thank you. There are significant developments as it relates to the fire and the EMS, and I'm not at liberty to go into all of these developments. In fact, most of them I can't. We had the meeting, it was a closed session, and as the board surmised, this stuff got out, and it shouldn't have, but it would once we bought in all five communities or municipalities. And we are looking at consequential changes to what's going on and how the fire and the EMS is run. Now, that is the single largest item in terms of growth for the Village of Cambridge. I mean, nothing else has grown twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty percent over the last five years. And part of that was the, you know, the, the full-time employees for the EMS. But we also have the fire department, where they have asked for 1.15 million in cost, and then with interest, it's up to about 1.4 million in new equipment, and there's new purchases that they're looking at. So there is going to have to be some tough decisions in this next year, not just with the budgets, but also with how do you structure that department? And I'd like to stay on there for one more year, because I believe that those will be addressed in the next twelve months. And at that point, trust me, I'm, I'm happy to step down. We get this taken care of, I don't have to stay on there. So that's the reason why I would like to continue on with the EMS, fire and EMS.
I think it's important for the rest of the board to understand what's going on on that committee, and we don't have a clue. And I don't think that committee has to do everything in closed session that they do. Everything that they've done, they could have done in open session. So what bothers me is the cloud of secrecy that is across the fire and EMS, and that Mark believes that that's appropriate and perpetuates it. So I've got grave concerns that we don't know what's going on in our largest expenditure, basically, for this village. We spend more money on fire and EMS than pretty much anything else that we have, and we have no clue what's going on there. And quite frankly, the hiring of a private detective, when you haven't even met with or talked to the people in the fire department, I just don't understand why you would do that.
It's the lack of transparency that, that's really bothersome for myself, you know? I mean, we're finding out from a letter that gets sent to our administrator, and she distribute, appropriately distributes it out, but that's how we're finding the information, as opposed to our representative.
You're getting one half. You don't get anything from me because I follow.
Because you can't talk.
I, well, you're right, I follow what legal counsel has told the fire and EMS.
It leaves out the lurch.
You could have anybody here, Chris. Anybody could be on this bo, on that board, it's, you know, take me out.
Then let's switch it up.
Then ask them, ask them to bring things more into open session. Everything you do doesn't have to be in closed session. It doesn't.
There needs to be somebody that can rein in procedure.
Right, you guys should be above the board, that whole, that, the whole plan that you have for the department, like you said, that should be in open session. There's no reason why you shouldn't be sharing with all five communities and constituents.
And, and volunteer fire department.
What you guys are considering, that should be open session. You shouldn't try and get everything all wrapped up in a little bundle and say, here's the only thing we're going to accept, and you guys have to take it. That, we should be part of that process of deciding what is right for all the municipalities.
There are, there's two parts, essentially. You've heard the first part when we met two weeks ago, and that was on some very delicate information.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I couldn't say anything to anybody. I couldn't say anything to anybody, all right? I listened to the attorney, and, and, you know, we would get notes, and they would scoop it up. I didn't have a choice on this. Now, you can argue about that all you want, and you can say, well, if somebody else was on there, they would have to act differently. No, you couldn't.
Well, if someone else were on there, I would hope that they would say, there are two sides to every story, and we need to hear the other side of the story before we start making decisions on what's right for this village to do.
All right. I'm not talking about the intergovernmental agreement as a whole, I'm talking about one of the concerns that led to some dis, that's leading to some disciplinary proceedings.
I'm talking about that one thing, too.
Okay, well.
Because you only got one side of the story. You didn't get the other side of the story.
And there was, I'm not going to go into it in open session, there was an investigation. The fire department themselves didn't know about this.
How was there an investigation if you didn't talk to the involved party?
I don't even think he can answer that.
I can't, not at this time, and I'd have to go in a closed session if we were going to do that, and it's not on the agenda. So I, Paula, I know you don't like it, but that's the way that it is. I have to respect what the attorney is telling us, and I do. Do I always agree with them? And the answer is no, I don't. I'm sorry to cut you off.
I, I just, I just, I just think the cloud of secrecy over the fire and EMS has to be broken up. You guys have to start doing things more transparently so that not just boards, but our constituents know what the hell you guys are doing.
There, there has to be some pushback, and there has to be a situation where you can say, or whoever the representative can say, I respect your, our lawyer on the, you know, the fire and EMS commission, but I also have legal counsel, and I would like to run it by my legal counsel before we make this decision. You have that asset, you have, we pay for it.
On, on some of this?
Yes.
That's coming up, the financial, absolutely, we can, and that'll be in open. There will not be a closed session on that, but with the matters at hand, what was discussed at the last meeting, you were all in that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
All right? You understand it. And when the attorney is telling you, you can't talk about this, you can't talk about it. Now, that was just hard.
I agree, we can't talk about it.
All right.
But, but if the board has not talked to the Cambridge Fire Department and gotten the other side of the story, there is a problem. Then, then you are not getting both sides. If you are, if you are acting with only having one side of the story, that is a problem. And in our meeting last week, we were, or two weeks ago, we were told you didn't have the other side of the story. So unless something's happened in the last two weeks where you guys have gotten the other side of the story, that's a problem.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can go on and on and on. I guess what I'm, I'm saying here is, I'd like to stay on the fire and EMS. I think that there is a place, and I, like you, Chris, I didn't realize that, and I've read that governmental agreement. I never thought about it in terms of Dave Schrader, because he's not chair of Lake Mills, and he's on there. So I, I, it was always just, you know, you're the.
For years, Mike Grumpf was the village's rep on the fire commission. After he was on the board and stepped down, he continued on. I think when Steve Struss became president, Steve then took the seat again. But Mike Grumpf had been the village's.
Well, there's precedence for it not being the president.
Did you have an alternate in mind?
I would ask who, who might be interested, I was thinking Chris, because he's only on four other committees, or Eric, you're only on four other committees, I believe.
No, thank you.
Or you're on seven, so I think you're already overloaded, and you're on seven, so I think you're overloaded. And Bill, you're on seven, so I think you're overloaded. So let's be clear, I really don't, I don't want to be on it. So it's not like I'm advocating for myself, because I don't think I could be effective, because I think I would butt heads too much with other people there. So, so I guess, Chris, if you'd be interested, that's who I would recommend.
Well, make a motion, we'll see where it goes, and we can discuss.
I'd like to make a motion to make Chris Brunnig the, the assigned representative on the Cambridge Area Fire Commission.
For the sake of discussion, I will second.
Okay, discussion?
Being the new guy. Chris, what would you do differently? How would you handle it?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that is a good. I, I, I think, you know, there, there comes a point where it's good to have the history. It's good to have the history in the background, and Mark, you have that threefold. But sometimes that can be a hindrance. And sometimes that can be a hindrance in the fact that, what do I share, what do I not share? I think what I would do different is I would come in with an understanding of what procedures it are, and if we just willy-nilly want to go into closed session, I would be the, the person holding my hand up, saying why, like I did when I was on the, the referendum joint committee. Why are we going into closed session for this? And I would utilize our administrator as well as our lawyer a lot more. Because I need, we, as a, as a board, we need to be fed that information, because we're making important decisions that are costing our constituents a lot of money, a lot of money. And that's, that's always been my litmus test going into this. What's it going to cost? What's it going to cost us? What is, what is this private investigator going to cost us? Finding out about this. So I guess a roundabout way of answering your questions, I might be more of a thorn in the ass for him, I guess, you know? Not purposefully, but just procedurally.
Okay, I, I like the sound of that. The only issue is, would you be willing to step in as treasurer?
That doesn't, I don't have to.
I know they elect their own, but that's what Mark is, is filling that position.
They can elect it, and I can turn it down.
Do they, does the commission have another person that's qualified to be a treasurer?
Steve Struss was the treasurer before, and Steve Struss doesn't have any accounting background, so.
Yeah, I mean. Being the new guy and kind of hearing stuff, my thoughts are, you know, I agree with Mark, but the attorney tells me, because I've been in situations similar to what you're talking about. You get sworn up and down by attorneys, confidentiality, and I think it's even more so in a public venue like this than in private industry where I've experienced it. I think, you know, based on what he said, there is only so much that can be done through that committee, without talking too much out of scope here, but, and I think the value of continuing the process that's already started has some value, and I'd hate to see it all start over and not say anything against you, Chris, but I think we're going to put everything back a peg or two by switching our representative around.
Okay, thank you, Bill. There's something that's coming up, and I can't, I can't say it, because I'm talking with a party, and, you know, there, there are some financial concerns. And it, I just, I don't want to do that, I can't say anything. So there, it's, it isn't just, well, okay, how much money came in, it's, it's, there, there is a, a lot that goes more into that. I'm not saying it's a full-time job, okay, because it's not, but it, it's going to be consequential, and you just have to take my word at that for right now. I'm sorry, I, I can't go any further, I will in about, oh, by the end of June, I'll know. But that's all I can tell you, so.
But put yourself in our shoes, what we just heard from you.
Yeah.
How frustrating is that?
It's frustrating to me, Chris, because this shouldn't be happening.
Then why even bring it up?
Because Chuck asked about the accounting and how that was being done, all right? I am telling you, there is an accounting issue, but can I mention it right now? The answer is no.
But it's not like you're the only person who can solve that accounting issue. They could find someone else, someone else on the board could pick up, just like we do with any other board committee. You are not the only person who can do that.
I can work Excel.
Well, it's going to. Well, it's going to...
And, and, and we have, we have adminis, we have treasurers on our, who we can look to for guidance and for assistance.
I wish it were that simple, and it's, it's not.
You're looking at a forensic, a forensic accountant to do, to do what you're talking about.
To do something, but it's, it's checking into some numbers.
So if, if this change did happen, would you be willing to assist?
If this change happened, would I, would I assist? Willing, I would assist.
Like what Paula said, pass down?
I have no choice. You know, I, I get, my authority is dry from the board. If you, the seven of, the six of you feel like you want to have a replacement, there's a replacement. I'm done. I mean, on the fire and EMS. I don't think that's a prudent move, given what, what we are doing on, on everything. But I would, I would cooperate with the next person. I would say, though, I think that's a mistake. I'm listening, you know, to you, Paula and Chris. And is there a way I can, I can see that some of this information gets shared? Because this, this issue that's, I'm talking about right now, financial, I'm going to just say this. It's only come out in the last, I want to say, 10 days. So that's it. That's all I can say. It's relatively new. But are there other things that I could share with you? And I just don't, I, I've had to listen to the attorney. We've got a second meeting that'll be coming up. It'll be open session, and we will be talking about the finances and everything that's going on, what the justification is for, for modifying the IGA. And I don't have a date for that, but that is being worked on. So.
Mark, if you, if you stand, because Paula and Chris got a good point. I look, the closed session's causing so much frustration. I mean, that's why our department's so upset. They don't know what's going on. Can, can you push back? Can we have more open sessions and fight back against Steve and Mark Cook? Open it up so they know what's going on.
Yeah.
It's like...
Yeah, I...
Because all of the IGA, all of the IGA restructuring, all of that should have been open session. There was no reason that part had to be in closed session. None. I, I get the personnel thing. I get the personnel thing, that I get. But the IGA stuff, none of that had to be in closed session.
Yeah, 90% of that meeting in closed session could have been open. About 80%.
Yeah, that's the last one.
Well, at the same time, it was, I don't know if it was Mark's personal decision to be in closed meeting. I think it was an entire board thing to be closed meeting. But, but I agree with, with you guys. 90% of that meeting should have been open and not closed.
And just go into closed for the things you need to go into closed.
Exactly. Because personnel issues are, are personnel issues, and that is absolutely not open session. That's closed.
I'm, I'm here to serve at the pleasure of our board and, and the Village of Cambridge. So whatever decision this board makes, I, I'm at, I'm at your disposal. But I think we definitely need to take a look at changing, rotating this position out, getting fresh set eyes. You know, I understand exactly what you're saying. But sometimes, like I said, there's the, the history can, it can be a downfall. It can be a detriment.
Okay. Where, how do we want to proceed with this?
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to put, to assign, to appoint Chris to the Fire and EMS commission. So we need to have a vote on that if discussion is closed.
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Whitworth.
No.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
No.
Phelps.
Yes.
Brianit.
Yes.
Franklin.
I think you do have some history, Chris, with the fire department. We have to say no.
And McNeil.
I don't know if I can vote on it, but since it didn't pass.
Yeah, you can vote on it.
Well, it's involving me.
Yes, well, it was involving Chris too. Oh, media assignments, this is the effect, I'll see.
Well, then no.
I wish there was a way that we could, and I'm just speaking, that we could have two of you on there. Because I think that would be more beneficial in the long run. You have the history. Chris can be a big arrow in somebody's backside. And it would be a, a team effort to be able to get things done in a more proper fashion, I believe.
We had tried that a year ago, Chris.
Not officially. The agreement says one per community, so...
And I can't, I couldn't ever go into closed session or anything like that.
I don't know if we were having a closed session meeting.
So Chuck, you're saying my history with the fire department is, that would be a detriment?
You were on the fire department for, for a brief time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just remember the stuff with the, the new station. I don't think it's as clean-cut as, as you said. I think there is a little history.
You mean, the, how do you vote on the referendum?
Yeah, it's I just, yeah, I think there's, there's a little bit of history there, not, you know. I was transparent about it, my position.
Okay, all right. Anyway, so I stay on there. That's the way this list of appointments, look, I'll come back around to what you were suggesting.
For a year.
That's how, that's how it's listed, but, but I can still, I will still be voting no, just so you all know. I will be voting no not to approve this organization.
Roll call on the 2023 appointments.
We're going to make a motion.
Somebody would need a motion and...
I make a motion that we vote on our appointments for 2023.
You mean that you approve them as written?
Yes, very well stated.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris, seconds. Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Helen Beck.
No.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Brianit.
No.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yeah.
McNeil.
Yes. Okay. All right, we got through the, many assignments. Move on. Park reservation, Distinguished Gentlemen's Drive, West Side Park, September 24th. So this gentleman did get a hold of you, Lisa? All right, and anything you can tell us?
Application is in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for the Distinguished Gentlemen's Drive for West Side Park on September 24th.
What exactly is that?
It just looks like it, there, it's like a car rally. And this is just the starting point.
This is not the...
That's how I read it. It is not the car show that a certain...
Okay, no.
I'm just asking.
It's a worldwide fundraiser for male cancer and vintage car rally. I think when I talked to the guy, he's going to have about, I don't know, 35 vehicles, and it would be down at Veterans Park. Lisa had told me that, because he had asked about Wes, or the Veterans Park, not West Side. And the problem with Veterans Park is that it's part of, it's right there on the street, and we don't want to have that. So, you know, this rally could be during the September. It's, doesn't conflict with anything.
I'm sorry, Lisa, and the, the application did say the...
Let me go ahead and second this.
Oh, sorry. The, the, it did say the pavilion or whatever. Does that mean that they, they want to use like the lower part of the pump house?
Yeah, so it could be open to them to use if they want to have food or, you know.
Okay, that's what, I'm like, because I'm like, there's no, there's no pavilion out in West Side Park? I'm like, unless they mean that lower part, yeah, the shelter part, okay. That makes sense to me then. Yep. What was it?
Can we build one?
No.
Okay, all right. So we got a motion and a second?
We do.
All those in favor of the application for the park reservation permit? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. Item C under new business, Ken Kemler, Cambridge Rib Fest, August 6, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure for the Cambridge Rib Fest on August 6th.
I second. I was going to do that. The words got out of my mouth.
All right.
Moving things along.
Okay. All right. I think Ken does a good job. You know, it's worked out. Any concerns, anybody?
My husband loves Rib Fest.
Okay.
Who doesn't?
I, I don't. I mean, although I do like the, I do like the non-meat stuff that Ken serves for Rib Fest. So I will partake in that.
All right, we got a motion and a second?
We got a question about this. Lisa, is he going to have to do like a license for...
If he is going to serve other places, he would need to get a extension for his premise for that day.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of, you know, authorizing the Mill Street for Ken Kemler's business on, I don't know, what is the date here? August 6th. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay. Item D, temporary Class B beer license, Cambridge Area Lions Club concerts in the park on June 2nd, June 30th, and August 4th.
I'll make a motion, we grant that temporary Class B liquor, beer license for the Cambridge Area Lions Club for those dates.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Sure.
Good. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Ken gets, or the Lions Club gets their permits. Okay, item E under eight, weekly yard waste and brush recommendation from Public Works Committee.
I'll take that. At the last Public Works meeting, we discussed reducing the frequency of the, the brush and yard waste pickup mainly due to the workload on Public Works, the wear and tear on equipment, and also the availability of the, the brush dump that we have available. So what we settled on was the, we're proposing the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. You know, it's still, I think that's still adequate. And then also posting the brush dump hours on the website and maybe in the paper so people know where that is, so they can utilize that. And, you know, if they need to, they can drop that up.
So...
Pretty good compromise.
Oh, I was just going to say, some of the residents that I've heard talk about the dump site is that it's not been open during the hours that it's been stated.
The dump site.
The brush dump site.
The brush dump site. And so I said, well, where are you exactly going? And they've articulated out past the Lions Club.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
And so I, I'm not there to, to check it or to verify it. I'm just saying that's what I've been hearing.
During, during the winter and the spring, when it was very wet, they did not always open it. I know when, yep, when I, when, because there were a couple of times I called Todd, hey, we've got stuff to take out there, is it open? So, so if we do this, what's their plan to make sure it's opened at the, during the hours posted? Or can we just make sure they put a plan together to do that?
I can tell you what we did when I was on Public Works is we, that was one of our first orders of business when we come into work in the morning. We go out there and unlock the gate. So I mean, that, I think that's, you know, we go out, it was like our battle rhythm. We'd go out there, unlock the gate, make sure everything was opened up. We'd do a little roundabout, making sure everything was good inside there, and then it was open. Well, and then at, at the end of the day, it's a matter of like, you know, we kind of straw poll who's going to close it up if we need to close it up. There was a while there in the summertime where we didn't close it. So.
So here's, to go along with that, does it really need to be closed at night during, during the summer?
Trash.
I think so, because someone's going to drop off a bunch of construction.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, we have some cameras out there now, but...
And DNR has requested that it's not open 24/7.
Okay. Chuck, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we change the weekly yard waste and brush pickup days to the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. And also post the brush dump hours on the website and in the paper. Maybe even give directions on location.
Yeah, the hours are on the website, but we do location.
Okay.
And that's your, every, every month, to good winter. Okay.
Does anybody want to make a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now we can get into the discussion. Go ahead.
Do we need collection in the winter?
Well, like Christmas trees, and I guess that would be the big one. There's not much pickup going on.
And with the understanding if there is a storm event or something, they are going other days besides these. You know, right now, it's besides every Tuesday. This would be in addition to the second and fourth if there's any of that.
And this is a service that the residents really like. We pay a lot of money in taxes, and I don't, I don't want to reduce the frequency anymore than this because it's, it's one of those things where people are like, all right, pay a lot of taxes, but at least we get this.
And we are Tree City USA, so we have a lot of trees. We encourage people to plant a lot of trees. Not everyone has vehicles that they could take things out to the brush site to keep those trees healthy. So I think this is, that's why it's a really important thing to have.
I'm going to support this, Chuck, but I could see a problem coming for at least a year. And that is, folks have gotten used to picking it up every week. And so it's going to be out there, and then it's not going to be picked up until, you know, the following week. Now, you're going to go through that adjustment phase, no matter what.
Lisa can adjust the answering machine to say, and if you're calling about brush pickup, brush pickup is only done on the second and fourth Tuesdays.
And maybe we could see if on a water bill, if we could, if there's nothing on a upcoming water bill, we could put a note, like we said, put it in the newspaper and so forth.
Yep, that's a good idea.
This can be effective right away or next year?
Effective this summer?
Just thinking of that calendar that goes out though.
Sometimes if I send it as a press release, sometimes I'll take it as a press release.
Better off when the people are going to complain waiting until first of the year.
We try to do it as a press release.
I like that idea.
I don't want to complain through the middle.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of moving our weekly to a, what is it, every?
The second and fourth?
Yeah, the second and the fourth Tuesday.
To go along with our board meeting.
Yes.
Posting hours and the website and the paper, any, all of that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody wants to keep it the way that it is, so it changes. All right. Okay, move on. Unfinished business? I don't see anything. So we're good there? Correspondence? Good there. Item 11, questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items? We've got LBK Park.
Then we're missing one that I had spoke about earlier. The parking across the street from the winery. How it's very awful when they have big events. And then the other question I have is, who owns that green space by their parking lot? Do they own that? They need to expand their parking lot a lot into that green space that they have.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, we can't tell them what they...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm not saying we should tell them.
That might be an option for them if we were to take away street parking. I understand that.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking, who owns that?
All right, we can, we can... All right, we can, we can put this on the agenda.
And on LBK Park, I did put a call in to Lee Recreation, they're getting together some packages as well as individual pieces that could be added and so forth.
Blake Solberg and I are planning a golf outing, so that'll become a number pipe, hopefully this summer.
Not out there, playing.
At a real golf course probably, Mark.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I mean-
Are you gonna do each house, each house?
You could do an 18-hole putt-putt out there.
Play with a wiffle ball or something.
I'll be real, Mark, at a real golf course.
On a real golf course, all right. I could make a recommendation there. I'd like to have the comprehensive plan be discussed because I just don't know if we're gonna get to 400.
There is a process that that follows and it comes to Plan Commission, first Plan Commission by state statute is in charge, it comes to them, the survey results will come to them, they'll make recommendations to the board. There will be some public meetings along the way that the board, but that is set by state statute, how that process goes.
Okay, all right, as long as we're, because I just don't know if we're gonna get to 400 signatures, that's all, you know.
Responses, you mean?
That's not, if we don't, it doesn't kill the comprehensive plan, they're still gonna take what they get and-
It, it, it's just a much smaller sample, so it may not be entirely representative of what the people in the village would want.
Okay.
The process continues.
Anything else for questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items?
The Water Street PQ Bridge, has there been any updates on that being replaced?
No, I have to check, I can check with the county.
I thought that was this year.
No, it was a couple years out. They were going to see if we could qualify for different funding where the feds would pick up more. And so I haven't heard back from them if that, if they did withdraw our old application and resubmit under the new funding, so I can check with them.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Now that we have a treasurer, have we gotten anywhere or can we take back up the, determining how the equalized value for Fire and EMS is split and making sure that the dollar amounts for the two municipalities where we're only doing a portion of them are taking the equalized value of the actual houses we are covering versus just like 5% of the total of the town of Lake Mills? Is it the actual houses that we're covering in Lake Mills and Oakland?
Yeah, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel on that, we asked that question before, right?
We did and-
I don't know how far Chrissy got with it.
It was in that letter, that one.
We did ask the Fire Commission, we never got a response and I hate to put you on the spot, but as the treasurer of the Fire Commission, do you have that answer?
No, I don't have that answer. I didn't know anything about this until right now.
No, the Village Board has asked in the past, Chrissy had been looking into it and-
I, I just bring it back and, you know, I'll try to have a meeting with them and bring this stuff up. Okay, anything else? All right, upcoming meetings, May 30th, a special board meeting, that's next week.
Yeah, so this was added, and I wanted to see if you guys are available next Tuesday. Since Jane came on as our attorney at the beginning after each election cycle, we've kind of done our own little one-on-one class just to go over some processes, procedures and, you know, available for questions, answers with the board. So we were, since this is a five Tuesday month, thought that next Tuesday would be a good time to do that. Informational meeting.
What time?
6:30.
Okay, June 12th, Plan Commission, June 13th, the Village Board, regular meeting, June 14th, Library Board, June 20th, Water and Sewer, and then at the end of the month, June 27th, Village Board.
And we will be scheduling a licensing committee once all the applications are in and-
When do we have to approve them by?
By the end of June, so the approval will be at the last meeting in June. So licensing will be held before then to give recommendations.
Oh, like 6 o'clock or whatever, 5:30?
Okay, that takes us up to item 13.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.